Ladies and gentlemen, Jim. Okay, I want to call the meeting to order. Ten fourteen, I want to apologize to the public, we have some technical issues. And that's why we're running a little late. This is a hybrid meeting, which means that we're meeting in person, or a select meeting in person, as well as town administrator and we've got a select assistants, executive assistants. And it's going to be recorded and uploaded to, actually it's live on YouTube and it's a Zoom meeting. Just want the members of the board to identify themselves, like Mullen.
Michael Hall.
Louis Lamoyne.
Dr. Z.
President.
And Kimbri Chico is president. Could we all stand to be in place?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So the first agenda item is the board of select individuals' individual feedback on town operation needs and goals. So does anybody want to address this?
Sure. I think things are going really well. And I want to commend our town administrator on really picking up the ball after really having five, five, almost six months of really not having a town administrator. So there was this transition period and he's done an excellent job. One piece of feedback, and I've actually discussed this with the town administrator, as well as the administrative team, would be for them to resume weekly meetings amongst themselves, the three, executive assistant, administrative assistant, and town administrator, to discuss a plan for the upcoming weekend, and we do that at the beginning of the week. And I know former town administrator Aaron Steen was doing that regularly with them. And I found that it provided a lot of continuity for the operations coming out of those two offices, the executive offices. So that's my one main feedback. But I think things are going really well. I really wanted to commend the administrative team on just a good job of like filing, just documents that we were backed up on, and I think things are going pretty well. So I just wanted to thank everybody.
And just by that, we did go through a transition, as the public may know, the door changes next door in the building. And we've had the whole our office, our select office, all disrupted. So you may see some files out, but they're in the process of putting that together. It's time consuming, they have a lot of, they're doing all the other town business. But I also want to make a comment that I think we're pretty well fiscally sound. We've had a good annual town meetings, we had a good budget that we had to reduce in overall support for different departments. And just that we're watching the dollars of the taxpayers again to the town. So I just want to commend FinCon, a former town accountant, Mike Mullin, our town administrator, as well as the board of select We're in pretty good shape.
Essentially, every first time, we're very fortunate in this town to have some outstanding employees. Starting at the top, like Mullen, the staff, Karen, Leanne, the entire crew, very professional. And, and one of the things that wasn't mentioned, and it's been a little bit of a difficulty, is that while they've been working, clerk's office in particular, they had to work around construction repairs, remodeling. And they should be commended for their patience and their dedication to the citizens of Dayton. In the area of finances, this is my first go around of looking at a budget. When I was told that there was 1.4 million dollars that needed to be paid from the budget, I thought that was going to be an overwhelming task. But through the great efforts of FinCon led by Eddie Schwartz, Mike Mullin, my two colleagues Brad and Kent, we were able to do it. And what I found so incredible is that we did it without laying off anyone. And we did it without affecting the tax base. And we were able to continue providing the services at this town meetings. The one area that I think we still need to work on is communication. We have made some upgrades on the communication at our meetings. And additional microphones are coming, the video has improved. I'd like to see if at all possible, and we do this in Rainy here, is a board, a bulletin board, that posts the news and upcoming meetings. And that could be done right at the fire station, the North Dayton Fire Station. So people wanted to know when meetings were coming up, or even take a look at the warrant ahead of time, they would be able to do that. Just a way to improve communication so that people know what is going on. And the other thing that is so, so important, with transparency, the rumors, the gossip decreases. Because they're not hearing rumors. They're not contributing to the spread of things that may not be totally accurate. The more we can do to put the information out there to the public, the less likely that is to happen. Thank you.
And along that line, I think you've mentioned before that the, each committee, each board should be posting their meetings on social media as well as a website, so that before the meeting happens, the public knows what's coming up. And if the meeting is canceled, they need to know that also postponed or canceled. I think you've also mentioned that too, Dr. Z. So I think it's important that we basically, we get our schedule. There's so many other meetings going on, and I think the public have the right to know when those meetings are happening, whether they're going to be Zoom, in person, whatever. But the public needs to know in regular basis what meetings are coming up for the following week. I'm not sure who should be in charge of that necessarily. And it's more work for a member of, in our offices, to have them do that.
So the way that it's supposed to work is, I don't know if everyone recalls, but before, it was probably around last year, we had requested more hours for the administrative assistant because basically they're also acting in a capacity as a website administrator. Notice I talk about the position of the person. But they've done an excellent job, and the way that it's supposed to work is, for example, I am on the agricultural commission. A member of that committee, usually the clerk, is supposed to have a login, like a username and a password, in order to edit their webpage on the website, update, uploading meetings and minutes, agendas, things like that. That's how we created the website. The problem is that obviously not everyone does that. Probably not a lot of people do that. Obviously, our office is good at doing that because we have a routine and a practice of doing that. The other issue is turnover on committees. So for example, people don't get reappointed, they don't want to get reappointed. Well, if they were the person that did that on the website, now that's not being done unless they pass the torch. But then, we know that's not being done because a new person has not requested a website login or username and a password. But I guess my point is, in addition to updating their own webpage on the website, what the, the other point is, they're supposed to add their own meetings to the meetings calendar. That's supposed to be the central hub on the website for people to know when meetings are coming up. But the problem is that when people are uploading minutes or agendas, they're also not uploading their meeting dates. So if they're not aboard a committee that is having regular meetings, like third Tuesday of the month at seven, then they're probably not updating the calendar. So in my opinion, this is directly in line with Selecting Hall's prior request, I believe, to edit the board and committee handbook to really outline a process for not just appointments, but maybe we could also include information on, you need to go to the administrative assistant to get a, the clerk needs to get a username and login, and we expect that you will upload your minutes in a timely manner. After they're approved, we expect that you will edit the meetings calendar. I guess my point is, I don't think our office should be responsible, because I used to do it myself when I did that. I literally used to take the time to send out an email with all the meetings every week. And then some people would come back and say, wait, we went to town hall and there wasn't a meeting. Well, that's because there, no one was coming back and saying, hey, this committee isn't having a meeting. But we need to push it back and put the onus, that's why we appoint people, because we can't do everything ourselves, the three of us, or, and Mr. Mullin and our administrative team. That's why we need to put the responsibility on the actual commission, or committee, or board, or whatever. And make sure that each clerk has a web name and a password, and access to the meetings calendar, and also to their own committee's webpage. And that's how I think that we should handle that. Because I just, it's, it's, um, this, the administrative assistant would probably be spending all their time if it fell on them. And I don't think that that's fair.
Can I just add something?
Yeah, sure.
So I do spend quite a bit of time going back and forth with the various committees and commissions to upload whatever they send me. A lot of times they'll, then a day later tell me to take it down. We go back and forth quite a bit because a lot of times they change their agendas and whatnot. I have reached out to Revise, I'm going to talk to Mark Pacheco. And we are going to set up with Revise, and anybody who, I had put it to, as anybody who wants to
Okay.
learn how to use the website properly. Revise is more than happy to help and take a one hour course, if you can all come up with a time.
That's fabulous.
And I had set it up for the end of August, beginning of September, with the idea that Ed is kind of taking vacation this year on the summer. Because I wasn't sure if you could force people to do website management. So my idea was to offer it to everyone, and maybe someone from each commission would, you know, raise their hand to want to learn how to use it, so that they would have access to it.
I agree that we can't and shouldn't force someone. However, there are state laws that we are responsible for complying with. And so if, I'll give you an example. A big thing when former town clerk Madiras is here, was you would require, you would ask for a document, and the committee, like meeting minutes from, I don't know, so this is before we redid the website, from such and such a meeting. She would throw in her documents, and she may not have had it. And so the disconnect is, the board, committee, or commission is not getting the documents to the appropriate people or uploading them to the website, so we can avoid a public records request. That's the problem. So we do have to be compliant. So I think it is absolutely in our purview to say something to the effect of, someone on your board has to do this. They have to upload minute, meeting minutes, it's a state law in a timely manner. They also should tell people when they're having a meeting. Do they have to? No, it's not, all they have to do is do the physical posting. But I think we've set up an expectation, and we're rooting by example here. If I, we put all our meetings out there, then I think we can expect them to upload, they're stuck to the meetings calendar and let people know when you're having a meeting.
And some committees and commissions will really give up.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yes, I'm just going to pull that.
But turnover is also an issue too.
Yes, always.
So and if I could just add two quick things. Number one, I mean, in addition, like if positively looking at how our, how our website integrates with everything, well, one of the things that I want to explore with Revise as well, like is having like an auto, oh, oh, you know, like an auto posting in terms of like an immediate, so any meetings are edited, posted, just automatically goes to Facebook.
Yeah.
Do they have that capability? They didn't when we redid the website a few years ago.
Definitely want to check, like, I'm not sure if they do, I know other, other, like, other, other local government websites platforms, they do have that capability, so hopefully Revise might have that now.
Yeah. Well, and we, next year they'll re-upgrade our website for free, so maybe that'll be part of it, I don't know. That's a good question though, that's a good point.
And the other thing that I'm mindful, which is an element that, you know, like as we, as we train, as we train boards and committees on how to post and adequately use our website, oh, like actually, one of the things we have an issue with now, as I think we know, is that there are accessibility issues as well. Again, one thing as we go forward, just because we post an agenda, or we post a packet online, so like actually doesn't mean it's accessible. Like if we like post a scanned packet online, oh, you know, and I have to go through this whole process of updating my last job as well. Like if we post a scanned PDF version of an agenda or packet, or like any, or like any other materials, like I think like in ninety-five percent of the cases, all that information is not accessible. So, but if we, but if we have the packet like in words for, as an example, and then we create a PDF from that, all that is accessible. Like in terms of all the, all the legally required ADA requirements as well. So that's an area that we really need to focus on as well, as we go forward.
I don't, so I, I guess one, if you could elaborate on what you need. And then two, my understanding with the copier is that, I, I know why they do it in PDF, because they have papers and it's just easier. They can just re-put that packet of papers through and do it as a Word. It's just another thing of putting it through the copier. It's not like a big difficulty.
I think you're allowed to put it up on Word just because it
It shouldn't be edited, correct?
No, no, I'm not saying put anything up in Word, but if, it's like, I think we, in some cases,
He's saying have a huh, you want to have a Word version of it for something.
Uh, yeah, so like I think in some instances, in some instances, like it might, uh, that cannot even be possible, but I want to look of into it. A lot of times when we post just a scanned packet, or a scanned agenda, like online, like in some cases, that's not accessible. Like in term, like in terms of being translatable by a reader, or like anything else, because like it comes from a scanned
Okay.
It comes from scanned equipment. Uh, in some cases, we might be able to rectify that. But I also understand that in some cases, that might not be possible to rectify that. But I think as we look at the functionality of our website, I'd like to look at that as well. And so I can really, I can really better assess how we manage in that aspect as well.
So can't they just, I'm confused. Can't they just, that packet of information, can't they just put it through the scanner twice, once for a PDF and once for a Word document? And then just, we can tell, we can tell folks that we will always have a Word version of the information for those who may have
Yes. Yeah, yeah, no, yeah, yeah.
or disabilities or whatever, however we want to phrase that. But I think that, that we could just make that a practice.
I don't know that it scans and
The Word.
Are you sure? I thought, because I've scanned things on there and it gave me like an option. Okay. Well, now we need to scan it like that then.
I have Adobe and I can try to transfer to Word, but it doesn't always
Yeah.
transfer well, especially, you know, a lot of times we'll have picture document so much.
Because some of the pictures are, yeah.
Documents that come off of the web that we're using, for example, was for Saturday.
It doesn't keep the format.
Um, yeah, the format, it's sometimes it's good, but sometimes not so good.
We can look into that though, I feel like this is doable, for sure.
Yeah, no, like other towns have a way to do it as well. And I have, uh, can I have to say, like, if anyone is a queen of Adobe, it's me, yeah, so.
I'm not working with it. I like it, but I'm not The other thing I wanted to, I mean, sorry.
So I must have focused and I missed, we spent a lot of time with this, because we have a lot of things on the agenda. But should we send each chairperson of each board and committee an email, letting, letting them know that they're, they have responsibility to post their minutes, their agenda, and their meetings on our website, and ask them who was in charge of their committee? Whose responsibility it is, and also to advise them of the upcoming training that's coming on. So that all the committees know that they have an obligation.
Okay, I see.
That we used to get to, like when I, we, we did the website, I remember Mallory and I created a website authorization form for like the department heads, and maybe we could just, it's here somewhere, I can dish through my records and if you could look through hers as well. But we actually have people that sign, like, I'll give you an example, when former town accountant Mrs. Louise was here, I remember distinctly that she was the website, because she did it for the accounts office, and she signs like a document that we made saying that they would be the person editing. So we have that, maybe we could use it so we know who should be editing each board, committee, and commission's website, and who's responsible for that. If we, if anything from the public comes to us, then we know, we go and we will file and say, okay, open space committee, I'm on it, isn't uploading their meeting minutes. So then we can reach out and ask for person what's on it.
Right, because that's, that's why. Okay, Dr. Z, you have a second?
Oh, no, I just, it's okay, we can continue. I just forgot to thank the town administrator and highway superintendent Ferry and our ADA coordinator Jonathan Gale. We get a hundred nineteen thousand dollar grant for ADA improvements in various parks throughout the town, which will benefit a lot of people. And I know it'll benefit seniors, it'll benefit disabled Dightonians, but really in general, it'll just, it's, it's safer, it's safer for everyone to have better crosswalks and sidewalks and roadways as well. But the cool thing is that there were some things that we had put off at the annual town meeting just due to, as we said, we had to find 1.4 million dollars in savings. So maybe now we could have a discussion for the special town meeting for things like, I'll just give one example, the thirty thousand dollars for the trails. As you know, Tom and is now going to embark on, they got money through the investment act through Reck, uh, Arkencloss's office to do some work on their ads. And so now, this is probably a good time to reconsider and rediscover the thirty thousand dollars for the Dighton part that the trails committee has requested, because as you know, the goal is to link those two up. So maybe now we could have that conversation, we're in a better place. But I just wanted to commend the team that worked on the grant. I know, in particular, ADA coordinator Gale and town administrator Mullin reworked it together really closely. It was the third try, and the third try, I guess, is the charm, is the old thing. But good work, you've been here three months, you are getting grants, and it's just amazing, it really is. So I just wanted to highlight that as well.
So you spoke, you, you stole a little bit of my thunder, but the next, no, this is a, my next, uh, I, which is individual updates on the five year plan, as I told you, like the problem, obviously you guys are just for us, so you don't have, as yet have a five year plan. Dr. Z and I have had a good word of the last few years, a plan, what was posted, which is, which is in a packet, the last comments or statements that Dr. Z myself, Selecton McGulott, had done so far. So the packet indicates that last October, which is my, I had two issues, one is in the library and as I pointed out, past we were waiting for a grant from the state, we've been approved, but the funding isn't, isn't there? Not necessarily in favor of adding that to the, you know, the Conically building. I prefer to have a new building, but we did. Last November, we, the townspeople approved a money list to make it accessible for the ADA client. So we just recently, last week, hired an engineering company to work on that. And that plan, since it's developed, will be reviewed by the town's ADA board. So as we said, we're not going to be opening it as a library, but it will be, it is in the town building. We're in the process of putting out a big lease for a building for the library, these will be dealt, a portion of the library, or we can have that all set up by September or Labor Day, when the state wants to finish set up. I believe we're going to address that at the next meeting. We got into ADA plans, yes, so.
Can I just ask you a few mind about the library before we move on? Is there going to come, I guess this is just a general question, and I know, please know, I know that library trustees have their part, and that the municipal building study committee has their part. But I guess my question is, at what point do we all get together, the relevant stakeholders, and talk about the long term? I know we're dealing with the short term, just, just getting the library to be able to service people the way it used to. This is our goal in the short term. But in terms of the long term, when do we all get together and have a conversation about, do we want to continue to be on this list that prevents us from being on the list for a new library? Because they're still on that list for the renovation project on Main Street. And I guess, I just want to know, at what point do we all, and I'm not even giving my opinion, but when do we all get together and start talking about the long term? And I know they're not even accepting new grants.
That's what I was going to say, they're, they're not accepting the grant, so right now, we still have, we still have this pending,
So we'll just, we would just
I mean, that's something that the townspeople, I, I expressed my opinion on it many, many times, that we need a new library, fighting the citizen in the library. However, that's not my decision, it's the townspeople's decision. So whenever that, the state comes up with the grant money, the townspeople will have to make a decision whether or not that's the reason why they go. But actually, just know that they're not accepting any of the applications. So I would prefer, once you've got accepted the applications, that we reject this one here and go for, you know, go for a new plan, for a new library, and currently, or grant for that. But that's premature, because they're not accepting it right now, I mean, just because of the fiscal difficulties the state may be in, when they're not accepting that applications.
So we would wait until they opened the new round to have, okay, that makes sense. We're, we're waiting for that, okay.
And we're not able to change the current grant that we had given, unless we do it on a property that's, you know, like a library, yes,
Yes.
and there's no room to, we're not really there, and this is very, it's like that, so. We're more focused on immediate needs, you know, with my, my
So if I can, Mr. Jim, and one of the things that I've been working, like in talking, like with the director of the library, and she's been actually keeping the math board at library commissioners in the book, which I think is an incredible thing, I guess, to what I need, how we might be looking to go forward. So like in a month from now, like the MBLC is not, oh, like, oh, like, oh, in any, oh, in any way, cut off guard about where we are and what we're trying to do. And then the conversations that the library director has had with MBLC, they have actually said, when we do get a modular, that they would actually be happy to come down and work with us to maximize the spacing and everything else, which is great. At that point, I would, sort of, when they do come down here, hopefully this summer, I hope to actually begin a conversation with them, especially with the ARK money, that's to the state, the Commonwealth assets FY twenty-two budget, and sent it to the governor yesterday. And right now, the state has more money than they, than they know what to do with, just in terms of state revenues, and then like this APRA funding is a whole nother amount. So like in the event that any of the APRA funding or any of the, the over projected state funding makes its way to the MBLC, you know, I would like to have a conversation, like if the board agrees about, like I think right now, we're number fourteen on the list. So like we're number fourteen in having a place order. Would the MBLC entertain the option of, so like of having the town actually keeping that, oh, like in that sequence on the list, but maybe look at another type of design, or anything like that? So like we don't have to start, like from day one and square one on this. And then, then based on that conversation, one of the things I could potentially envision, again, based on that answer, I mean, that, I mean, that special town meeting in the fall, perhaps establishing, re-establishing library building study committee. So specifically for the library with all, all the stakeholders that could be relevant. But I'm actually, when I heard, so like when I heard from Mr. Vowes that the MBLC was interested in coming here and working with us, I, for one, I just view that as a huge opportunity, you know, so that they're not really trying to be a hero to us, like they're really hopefully going to try to work with us, and maybe we have the opportunity to, um, um, you know, to, to negotiate about where we are on the list, so. That makes sense.
Yeah, it's just that a couple of years ago, I did meet with them, as well as a, a library director. And they, I asked that specific question, are we able to change our plan here? And they said, we can change our plan on that property, but once we decide we're going to have a, another area on the turn, yeah, they'll find a, it's worth asking that question when they come down, obviously, and
Yeah, okay.
see if we can work with them. There is a property next door to the library that's a sale now, it was a house, but we're probably not positioned to buy that, extend that.
Which, which, oh, two types.
It's, I think it's real hard to stand for, so, but I, I
Actually, can I ask a question? Would the board not Would the board, not, I mean, nothing is binding, but would the board be amenable to allowing the town administrator to make at least an inquiry about that? I also did drive by to that property.
Hopefully, okay.
Um, and again, just to gather information and present it back to the board of selectmen?
I have heard on that note, they already use a PNS on that property.
I swear, they waited to put the for sale sign out, so they already had.
Yeah, 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 I've heard they would have a PNS almost as quickly as the sales time.
Do, can you just make a, a little call? Is that okay with that?
Yeah, absolutely.
At least confirm that, you know, the top of the table.
And thank you, Mr. Chairman, for resetting my expectations with the MBLC.
Yeah, no, I, I wish, I hope they change. So regarding my other thing on my agenda, my five year plan is making too many buildings, properties in town. Some buildings and properties ADA client, I wanted to thank Ferry, ADA coordinator, Mike Mullin, as well as Brett, because he was active in this, because he was acting town administrator at that time. With the grant that we got, hundred eighteen thousand, we know the thirty eight thousand fifty cents. I know that Brett said it was under nineteen thousand, exaggerated, I'm trying to, sixty-two thousand. So, but it is great for the town that we're gonna make some of our sidewalks and streets ADA client. Really concerned about Lincoln Village, so I'm glad that's part of the project. I mentioned that, that's the, my website, we meet once again, website. So I'm really impressed with that, but there were a lot of people that were active in this. I know Michael's a little late coming to it, because he wasn't necessarily our town administrator at the time, but he was involved with us and this is great for the town, I think we have, we have this grant. So I thank everybody for doing that. The commission, commission on disability, we meet on a regular basis, I believe we'll meet again next week. We're working on the ramp that's over here, we wait for the response on the fairness that we asked for that. We are working with the group that's involved with the garden, James Bridge Garden, which is next over to Town Hall, and making that the ADA client. So the commission itself is very active and doing a lot of work. They're also working on an ADA client playground for the residents in town. So that's my update on both the, my five year plans that I got. I did not write anything like I've done in the past, but this was, kind of just introduce some of this to Slime and Slime and Paul.
Thank you.
You have any updates in your five year plans, aside from?
So, as you know, the clerk, I don't have that many, actually. The clerk has moved, clerk's office has moved into where the former town accountant's office was, and the town accountant's office has relocated into where the former, or the selectmen's meeting room was. Construction is still ongoing in that shared office, as I know, Mr. Ferry, he lives in there. The last time I was at Town Hall making progress there. And they're also working on, I believe, the front, the front of, the counter, yeah, I don't know why I'm saying.
The counter, Chairman, I do say.
Like it's a boutique, yeah, the counter.
It's actually good, oh, that's good.
And it'll be a shared counter, right, okay, so.
It's gonna be ADA client.
Exactly, which is in line with, with your project, Chairman Pacheco. Regarding the sewer expansion, there really hasn't been much progress there. And part of the reason is because we wanted to, or we had an idea to try to use some of the American Rescue Plan money for it. However, we have a more, unfortunately, we can't think about expanding sewer, because we have an immediate issue with things like water infrastructure. And so it was the decision of the town administrator and I to really, at that point, work with the water district, allow those funds to be used for their needs. And we will revisit that next year, next this year. That funding, that source of funding.
So like on that and on the sewer, I mean, but I guess actually on Thursday, we're going to kind of email that meeting for next week regarding sewer, so I'll forward that to you. But there is still, like, a potential regional outlook or examination, like a sewer expansion with our neighbors to the south. And I'm wouldn't encourage, like, the white peers who have been trying to, to facilitate a conversation, where that conversation, I think, goes at this point, is still very, very, very early. But, you know, as a region, like even going down to Far River, like, I think our region has needs and with the, with the South Coast rail also coming through, there's a sense that, like, with all the EPA and DEP mandates along with the rail coming through, if there could be a more regional solution identified, you know, it could be a potential. Thankfully, that means at the table in that very early conversation, but you could still wait till they say, oh, where and how that, even like move forward. But you know, like, any conversation we're able to, able to have to at least, like, actually keep the town at the table, I think it's a good thing at this point, too.
So, so.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you. Slime and Paul.
I, it lies that I'm a new member of the board. However, in regards to goals, I was appointed to the Dyton Water District as a liaison. And there've been some pretty exciting things that the Water District has planned and has already begun to work on. I'd like to share some of those. One of the things that took place yesterday with town administrator Mullin, myself, and the water, and DPW, and assistant mayor of Totten, we met in regards to developing partnerships with Totten. And one of the things that is a goal is to improve upon the emergency tie-in that Totten and the Dyton Water District have. And preliminary discussions were held and will continue for an action plan for upgrades to their tie-in, which is actually on Route one thirty-eight at their office, one thirty-eight across from Duncan Gardens. The Dyton Water District is also in the process of replacing a thousand meters in the town. And it will be, in a couple of years, an upgrade of the treatment plant. And they are also currently in discussions and negotiations for the purchase of a new well in town, which will enhance our capabilities. Might also be reducing some of the water bans that we do have in the town. My other goal is to bring back, or to revitalize, I should say, more correctly, the Industrial Development, Business and Industrial Development Corporate Commission with the purpose of identifying areas in the town that more growth in business could take place and also to get communication and publicity about what this town has to offer, how we can attract more business in the industry to the town.
I'm interested, two good goals, and that. We will address this again in three months. It may be before or after our special town meeting, depending upon the legal law, so they've gotten out different goals. But we'll have, so we might have a green report or, right, sometime in the fall.
So we have an issue, though, before we move on, is someone needs to be working on selecting Goulart's. Because we didn't abandon the fire station or the hybrid garage, and it's more than that. It's also the infrastructure, we made progress, as you know, we purchased a couple of things for the fire department and the hybrid department at the annual town meeting. But who is gonna take those projects on? I can take one more on, I can do work on three, because nothing's really going on with the sewer right now, really.
I'm sorry, you said you'd take on what?
I'll take on one of selecting Goularts, I'm a fire, I'm happy to take on fire, because I was already gonna meet with Chief Niki to discuss on Friday, but I had, unfortunately, someone closed the new pass, I could not meet with him on Friday. Um, I will meet with him next week, so I'm happy to do that. Who wants to work with Mr. Ferry, though, on his ongoing departmental needs? So someone has to take that up to, okay, okay.
So it's great, I didn't have to say anything.
Right. I was waiting, I was trying to look in my back here, you didn't even make eye contact, I was looking right.
This is my first story. Well, just being the chairman, I think, wasn't so interested in working on these two, so I'm glad that you two jumped into it and went on to, to work on these. So both, you know, Mrs. Goulart did a lot of work on both of these items, seeing the general items, goals, and I'm glad that they're on continuous, thanks for, I'm excited to see if we bring it up, but someone has to continue.
Do you have an update on the fire engine or any, any?
Yes, I have updated a good, on, on both of the areas, because I want to let the board and the public also, I'm happy to have a status update on both those. In terms of the fire engine, the chief, for the last week and a half, he's been working very diligently to get all the financing documentation in line for the new engine three. All that's left in that process is when the treasurer, on Monday, gets back from vacation, she just has to sign as a treasurer, all the borrowing, all the borrowing paperwork, and the authorization that we're gonna need for that. But in talking with the chief, actually, a lot of part of this week, actually, mid, mid this month, so in a week and a half or so, he has plans, they go down to Pennsylvania to begin actually working on the ordering, getting the production of the, of engine three, I'm actually a queue. So that's moving forward and that has accomplished one of the fire department's five year plans as well. Talking to the fire chief actually this morning, he still has a hope and a goal and a real strong priority to establish, actually, the fourth, fourth shift. Like, right now, we have three full-time shifts, his priority is to establish a fourth shift. He also, in terms of the SCBA, the self-contained breathing apparatus priority, that is outlining his goals as well. But he's, he's continuing, he's been continuing to work on that and to try to secure, actually, federal funding for that. But the size of our department and also, I believe, the income factor that the town has, 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 has repeatedly been accounted for that. So like, that is a real capital need that they have for the safety of firefighters. And one of the things, I mean, actually later on the agenda is, is a conversation about AFR funding as well. One of the things, because, like, actually, the SCBA's, like, actually relate to public health issues as well. Like, we were brainstorming about the fact that if, that if an expense like we, we place in the CBAs could be not for funding eligible use. The other new, the other new capital item that both the fire and police, that both the fire and police have, is actually, there are peaches up on Gutman Hill, like, there's like a gap. Okay, should say, there are challenges in communications, like, within the South, actually, within South Dyton, that both the, the fire department and the police have identified as a real strong need in terms of the communications network. And the fire chief has been working extensively with Sachet Komen on this. And, you know, like, originally from this thing, when the fire chief actually first broached the conversation with me, he mentioned a potential special town meeting article in October. But again, I mean, looking at the public health and the need to communicate going, public health and public safety emergencies, we're looking at potential AFR funding potentially for those items as well. So like, well, like, just essentially making sure that as we talk about all these priorities with the capital, like, many that we're trying to, like, actively leverage any funding source outside of town that we have. Then the highway department, like, as you know, we're moving forward with addressing their priorities from the, from the new, from the new to us that use, follow street truck, we're purchasing, the town meeting approved, the purchase of new tractor, we're looking to proceed with the boom mower, aspect of that at the special town meeting. And actually, on Wednesday, I spent part of the afternoon with the highway superintendent, like, actually, there is, oh, you know, and I can't believe that, oh, it actually took me that long to do it. But he, he took me around town and he showed me all the different trailers, that he has equipment, actually, parked that. And, oh, you know, and just really being still, the really, really strong need we have, like, for the all-encompassing highway bond at the transfer station, along with a few people there as well. And everything I saw on Wednesday, just really also, just being still, we have our equipment and buildings where there are structural roof issues at this point, and that is concerning, so.
Thank you, thank you for that. Moving on to the next item, discussing current and upcoming issues, we've got lots to cover and I'm sure we're all looking forward to going next door and being dumped. So it just seems like we're speeding it up a little bit, I apologize. Transition in financial, like, team, as you all know, we're gonna be, having a second board meeting next week to discuss with the new town council contract. I believe, town administrator Mullin has sent us all a copy of that proposal, so I would ask everybody to take a look at that and be ready to discuss this, whatever the town contract is, next Wednesday. Our process is retiring in two weeks and the job posting will be.
No, really?
July twenty, yes. So their job will be posted, or that job will be posted on July twenty.
Can we actually say hi to that?
Oh, yes.
Just recognize.
Yeah, we'll have a retirement.
Thank you.
Event for.
Yeah.
And also, we, something that we're also now looking forward to, or I believe it might be at the end of this, like, calendar year, the town treasurer, the collector, retired, so that's something else that we will need to address later on. So a lot of our financial people leaving, so we gotta.
May I make the comment?
Sure.
I think the, I did have a, I don't know if he wants me saying this, but I did have a conversation with former finance committee chairman Ed Sworst. And he feels very strongly about the, having the town treasurer collector position be separate, excuse me, be one and be appointed. And he thinks that the board of selectmen should bring it back up, put it back on the ballot, but this time have an actual public education campaign on why it's important. And I'm just raising this issue because I like to think, and I know Ed knows more about this topic than I do, about what's, what a treasurer collector needs to know in order to be effective in that role. And so that's why I'm bringing it back up, and I think we should at least have a discussion about if we even want to do that. But that is what he told me. I trust Ed, Ed has never steered me wrong personally and has always given me really good advice, especially when it comes to financial matters pertaining to the town. And so I just wanted to raise that issue, because again, we are having a treasurer collector retire who gave, you know, years, decades of her life to the town and was, we were really fortunate to have a Dyton resident who checked all the boxes, had the experience and the educational background, and I believe is required to work in this role. So that was my two cents.
Now, since that position is an elected position and she's retired before the next election, do we appoint someone or do we have to have a special election to fill them?
I think she's standing through that end of the next election, isn't she? That's what's my understanding of that.
I thought she was leaving at the end of this calendar year. Brett, you know, the elections in April, I think we may have that opportunity to appoint somebody temporarily, because I do think we need a.
It's like the town clerk, it would be just like.
Right, I mean, that person then will face, face an election, but we got a good comment. I supported the change that Ed Sworst, running in the past, it came before a special town meeting, put it on the ballot. However, the residents in town rejected it, part of it's because we did not spend, we. both the board did not do a great job of campaigning for it, quite frankly. I don't, I'm not, right now, I would not support bringing it up again. Uh it's, you know, as everybody knows, I have given my feelings, I'm changing the board of selectmen to select board. The voters rejected it, I don't plan on bringing this up every year until the people decide that it's okay. Uh so I can, at this point anyway, I'm not really looking to do it right now. Support it, I was a strong believer in it, but I just don't think we ought to bring it back up again. Residents uh pre overwhelmingly rejected it.
I totally agree, Mr. Chico, on that issue. I understand the rationale. I don't have a problem with it. Get appointed, but the voters spoke loud and clear, we want to keep it as it is.
Okay, I respect that.
Yeah, no, I I know we didn't do a lot of speaking on it, campaigning on it and shame on us for that, for not doing that.
I don't even think like that, I just mean, I don't even recall ever even getting a question about it and even having, like it just, I feel like it was a package deal and it got swept up with the name change thing and that was really what it was. Um so that's why I did tell him I would bring it back up, so.
No, I appreciate that, I appreciate that. Uh municipal uh finance seminar for the new staff, this is something that's coming up too.
So one of the things actually before I started, when I was officially on board, uh in talking with our administrative team in the board of selectmen's office. Uh the MMA, um MMA, uh a few times a year, they actually conduct what they call a municipal management finance seminar. Uh Karen, um I'm uh I guess I already planning to attend a following that's being offered by MMA. Um. Once in the application and deadline for all applications is due uh arguably end of this month. And one of the things I'm thinking as we're talking with our new town accountant and we also have a new assistant town accountant as well. Uh it could really be a really good uh team building, financial team building thing. Uh I guess, I guess if we were to reach out to MMA, uh you can see if we can send three people at the same time. So like then we could really uh be a seminar on Fridays.
Who were the three people, the town accountants and the administrative teams?
No, I get it, so it'd be the town accountant, the assistant town accountant, uh okay, oh, and our executive assistant as well.
How much is curable, didn't you want to do it as well?
I did, but then we were discussing that it might be a little bit to ask for four to go to. I don't know that you're allowed to have that many of each town, so.
So so this isn't the zone, this is a person.
So it's interesting on Fridays.
And the idea that the town accountant and the assistant town accountant probably would need it more. Given that they're both coming in fairly green for the situation.
What course is this again?
Um it's the um it's the MMA Municipal Finance Management Seminar.
Okay.
It's a six-week program, um and I actually went through it about almost two years ago now.
Did they, did they call it something else before, like?
They have a lot of.
Oh, really? Leadership, isn't it, isn't it?
Yeah, they have a leadership program as well, which is I think one or two year long.
Okay.
Program, but this is, uh this is a very, um it's like a very hybrid.
Mm-hmm.
Not hybrid, but it's a uh it's a shortened class, but it really, uh like, I mean, especially with our new financial team. Uh that really would give them kind of a very general overview of all the aspects. Uh like of what um is included and what, uh like, you know, really what what we should be looking for as a financial team and it goes, uh it gets into tax recap, the levy limit. Uh it gets into the need to really cost out and uh like in forecast when we're talking about revenues and um and union employment contracts, uh capital expenditures and the need we um have really to come up uh with a um oh, you know, like a capital like committee plan and a forecast going forward. Uh I can be able to, like, at the same time, we're moving forward uh with the financial management review from DOR. Uh I'm just thinking all these things would really sync very well together as we're planning and moving forward with our new team.
How is it, uh two quick questions, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Is this an issue where the employee pay, how is the bill paid, like?
By the town.
Okay, so there's no need for reimbursement or anything?
No.
Okay, all right, I have one question. We did include monies, the reason I ask is because we did include monies like with um the administrative team in mind in case they had wanted to take any courses, so I just wanted everyone to be aware of that, that that salary budget line was calculated specifically.
Mm-hmm. So are you looking for a vote as to send these three people to the seminar or you can just have an understanding of it there?
I didn't understand it at this point, but I just wanted us.
I support it.
Uh as we go forward, to be on the same page with the direction we're going.
Is this the course you had tried to get in?
Yeah, for like years. And I'm also trying to get into the other one, the local nurses.
Okay, okay.
Yes.
Mm-hmm.
This is what came up first.
DOR, DOR has has had a mini version of this that I've attended in the past, my first became a slacker, but I'm sure this is gonna be a lot more in detail. Slacker.
I was wondering if you could inquire a fourth person?
Oh, absolutely. Absolutely, well, like, and I actually, and I feel like I kind of like, I'm not wanting to work my magic, but I was like I reached out like on Karen's behalf and it all worked, so hopefully I have a little bit of.
I think it's really important to have the administrative team, like I'm really happy Mrs. Brady is going, I want Mrs. Curment to go as well because um when the town administrator left, like and then budget time came around and I was doing the performance evaluations, I also had to do the budget with the town accountant, who is also sort of new as well, he'd only been here a year, he came in at the last budget during it. Um and it was hard and it would have been really nice to have, like just to be able to walk over and just talk to Karen and me about the actual budget and and I just think that it would be really good. Regardless of who sits in these chairs or in the town administrator's office, just to have them know this stuff would be fabulous. I think it's a really good thing for the town. Because I know you're gonna be here forever, Mike, but I'm just saying. If anything ever happens, it'd be good that they also have the same knowledge.
So you're like, you don't have to jump ahead, but I mean, kind of moving along to like, one of the things that we've all so like we've already started as well, like a regular like financial team meeting, so that budget process is a more inclusive process. Uh like between our town accountant, with our town accountant, oh and with our other financial team members, uh with our treasurer collector, um our assessor and so forth. And this just makes sure that uh at the outset, everybody um is operating. Uh like starting with the same lens, if that makes sense, so.
Okay, so just for clarification, the fourth person wanted to be uh the engineer.
Yes, yes.
I just wasn't sure if you would want to go yourself or.
No, no, it's anyone.
Okay, sorry, so we're all on the same page with that.
No, for it's selectmen held, that's actually a really good point, selectmen, for Chico, um at the MMA conference. Not not just the annual one, I believe they do a couple throughout the year, um I went to one in Worcester once and I took a when I was first selected, like a municipal finance workshop, it's actually really helpful, yeah.
I I do want to go.
Mm-hmm.
But not at at the expensively.
No, yeah, absolutely.
You understand what I'm saying?
This is like a different.
I don't understand why.
Yeah, that's the DLS one that I could.
Yeah, it's it's a mini version, but they're, you know, they're gonna get more expanded, it's a kind of a short version, but uh they don't need.
We didn't get that information just yet.
Oh, I'm sure, I'm sure.
It's really helpful, I wouldn't even know again, honestly, it was that, it was cool, there were other workshops.
It was like a road trip.
Yeah. Okay, I remember that, we need Baki.
Was that right?
Yeah, yeah, we worked two years ago.
Okay, now, DOR, financial management review.
Good work on this one.
So, yes, uh so thank you, so uh Wednesday night at our regular meeting, and all this is interrelated. Uh like as we talked about our financial team and financial management, uh but we have reached out to DOR. Um and DOR, and I also met with on Thursday, I believe, our DOR rep, Tom Guilfoyle. Um oh, we've been keeping him abreast of all the changes and transitions um in our financial team as well. And uh we talked about the real need, where we are in our terms of our fiscal position, uh forecasting, looking forward. Uh that one of the great, great services by DLS, it's a feel like a financial management review of citizen talent, which is really not any type of uh any type of gotcha audit. It's really a, it's a holistic, it's a holistic and very instructive and constructive look on where we are and how we and how we stack up in terms of our our financial management and to do this uh like as part of this financial transition uh that we're going through, uh you know, and working with DOR uh and DLS. Uh like everybody agreed that it would just be a really good thing, uh so they're going to actually join the beginning of Wednesday night's meeting. Uh and better explain uh what exactly is, how long it will take, when we'll start. Uh but it's a hope that a lot of um uh what will be examined um and analyzed would really um help us as we move forward uh into our fiscal year 2023 budget planning process as well, so. Uh the real budget and policy line for me is very, very, very excited about this, so uh that'll, some more to come on um Wednesday night.
We're gonna talk about, you guys listen to your regular meetings, you talk about that financial.
Yes, yes, so I can.
Yep. Uh next item is discretionary spending procedures. We've already, um in the past, we have agreed that any discretionary uh spending of more than fifty hundred dollars that we want to potentially afford as well as our community, in three thousand dollars, uh the police and five hundred expenditures, open that. Uh so I guess the question is whether or not we want to change that or keep it the way it is. Do you want to elaborate on that, see that we have some comments about it or?
So, yeah, so I mean, as we know, at the end of FY twenty one, we changed the discretionary spending process. Sort of comes, I actually through me, um but uh which was um happened relatively quickly, but uh you know, however we go forward, uh like I do want to really formalize, better formula, better formalize the process. Uh like because depending on, uh you know, how uh how departments we showed. Um or you know, like also their view of essential, uh and discretionary spending really wasn't actually uniform. Uh like I found out from one department, for example, that they were uh holding off on doing anything uh on something that I would have actually viewed as essential the whole time, uh is uh for the last year. So they've had to play catch-up uh the last part of this fiscal year, so uh like this. And also as we're looking at the year and transfer process as well, uh one of the things I would like uh in terms of, so in terms of going forward, um into a whole fiscal year that I'll be like responsible for managing. Um is I don't want a year-end transfer process, uh you know, to get uh to be perceived as any type of year-end catch-up. Uh I think we uh in our departments uh should um have a tighter process where like if uh if throughout the fiscal year, oh, you know, any spending is going to occur, uh that uh departments and we and I have to understand how that spending is going to impact their existing appropriation. Uh arguably, we have uh uh we have some departments that uh have normally gone into a deficit uh in their expenses with the uh that they haven't addressed to that the special time meeting in November. They haven't addressed it at the special time meeting in like in May and they were really, uh they were really accompanying everything to the year-end transfer process, which arguably is just not the intent of what the year-end transfer process should really be. Um and so with the form, oh, with a more clear process, we can manage it. Have the town accountant involved as well to make sure that what is being proposed to be spent um is actually existing available funding that the town had, because in some cases I found oh, you know, throughout the fiscal year, also before I got here as well, what department was spending. Oh, you know, a few of them didn't even have that funding in existing in their budget.
So the form and the package, is that what you want us to address?
Consider, yes.
Yes.
I wonder, as we were going through the fiscal year, that there were a couple of departments that had a great deal of money, even leftover at the end of the fiscal year. Or April to June, or not a spending that's even there. Is there anything that either the board of selectmen or the town administrator can be allowed to do to police those departments so that doesn't happen? Where we called in to explain for us, or the town administrator will then report to us why they have all this money that they budgeted and it's February or one, but one instance, April. And they haven't spent all this money. Or it could be the other excuse to come in and defend why they overspent their budget. Rather than wait till the end and then we notice uh the department's got all this money to turn over to free cash.
I know we had less, those are all really good points, I noticed that we had less year-end transfer requests this time around than last fiscal year and part of the reason was because we told departments, don't guarantee that we're gonna do it again.
Mm-hmm.
Like run a tireless ship.
Yes.
Either request the money when we go to town meeting and everybody knows what you're requesting it for, or you need to just go without some of that. I don't, you know, you can't have it both ways, so. Um but I think those are good points, I think this discretionary spending form should stop, could stop one of those cases, which is the just buying a bunch of stuff, you know, at the end of the year, because I think it would have to come through you and then I think you could see on the form like we're not doing that, you can protect it.
Yes, and arguably, in order to close our books as well, and have us not take it either a hidden free cash uh or have us not, or have real auditing issues with our, oh, sorry, auditor. Uh like when departments really unless there's an emergency unforeseen issue, uh when they go into a deficit. Um at that point, we are the end of the year, I mean, oh, yes, uh all of us I actually don't agree with being in deficit, but in order to close out our books, we at that point, by the time we've already actually ended up in the red, so we don't have any choice but to approve it because we have to have everything reconciled to close out and that's really the the tricky thing and I think, so now I think a process like this would uh like that, oh, you prevent that from happening. Uh it would actually like better uh uh better force departments really to manage their budgets. Oh, oh, I can plan those expenses throughout the fiscal year. Um and then even on a monthly basis, I could share these forms, like if the board wanted to, with the board. So everybody could track along with the ledger expenditures exactly where we are, if that makes sense.
I feel like this should really solve both of what.
I agree.
With selectmen, because if you're thinking about it, it's gonna avoid people just buying a bunch of stuff, because you will now know about it. Um but it will also, what what will happen is because they're not able to do that, at the end of the fiscal year, we should be able to look back and see who has surplus, what we would consider to be surplus monies in their budget. And then we should not, we should not fully fund that for the next year, plus two percent. So I get what you're saying and I think that is my.
I understand, I understand that. But I also understand that fiscal management impacts a lot of people. And when you have significant amount of money left in your budget. That means, or could mean, that services were impacted. Or employees were impacted. When I say employees, the opportunity for overtime to provide additional services. The taxpayers were denied because of fiscal mismanagement. Not only does it affect that, but it also affects the future budgetary. Not only does it affect that, but it also affects the future budgetary decision-making of the Board of Selectmen. Cause if you turn back three hundred thousand dollars, you're telling me you really didn't need it. So next time around, I might be less likely.
Yeah, but we should absolutely be learning from the, what else would be, what? That would should be directly informing what is approved each budget year, you know, each fiscal year. I totally agree.
But I think it's important that, you know, somebody has a three hundred thousand dollar surplus, but the reason why you've got a fiscal.
Oh, yeah, 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 oh no.
It should be something unique that year that may change the following year. So we we need to find out why that money wasn't spent, not necessarily the cars didn't spend the money, but find out why it wasn't spent. And will they need that money to follow it before we make a decision not to uh to stop it off?
You may not know the answer to this question, but I'm wondering if the accountant's software is such that they can flag a percentage at a certain time of the year to see if someone was on course to.
Yeah, like a true target for the year, all their expenses should be trending at sixty seven percent.
Correct.
Yes.
And we, you know, give you a red flag, so then you couldn't, so they could inform you, and you could inform us, and maybe we have to sit down in the meeting and discuss what they need to do.
Agreed. Oh, like in truly country, and I know this is a rabbit hole, and I would say quick, but at the end of the fiscal year, from a free cash perspective, it's a balancing act because I like to see that departments haven't spent all their money too, because that means we're going to have a good free cash number to be able to help with our capital. But it's a balancing act. We don't want to actually overextend that either. So it's a real, which is why actually doing the financial management review will really help to look at all these things.
But maybe when when those um accounts get flagged, or if the Town Administrator is looking at it directly and just notices it, then maybe that can prompt meetings between the Town Administrator and that individual on the Board of Selectmen, the Town Administrator, and those departments. I think that that's fine. The only difficult thing again is that there are certain things, I just want us to keep in mind, there are certain things that like pick up at the end of the fiscal year. So like it is, there have been times when I was doing the budget, when after uh Town Administrator Aaronstein had left him before you had joined us, where you would have conversations with the department heads, and they would explain like, oh yeah, that's, it looks like it's not being spent, but that's because all the activity picks up in the second half of the year. And those are valid things, and you just keep their eye on them. But those were things that I didn't notice until, you know, I had to have those conversations, and then it makes sense, you know. Most, and sometimes the department heads agree with us. They'll say, well, you know, I put that in there just because last year, you know, X, Y, and Z happened, and I didn't want to be sure. And then you can, you know, and try and still bring it down a little bit, I mean, you can kind of meet in the middle. Um so those conversations should be had though, it's totally worth.
Because that's why we need to have the department head's one, we need to want either the board's. Like I was discussing it, our panel is discussing it, that they can explain to us. So I've also noticed sometimes money hasn't been spent, but then they give them a general reasons to why it hasn't been spent. At that point, it's going to be spent before the end of the fiscal year. So any other questions regarding this form?
Nothing.
I just have right now, so the Town of Compton doesn't sign off, um we need to, I think we need to adopt this one.
Do you want me to hear?
Either one.
Okay. Mister Chairman, I motion that we approve the FY twenty-two discretionary spending request form as presented and authorize the Town Administrator to review said forms in accordance with the adopted policy of the Board Regarding Purchasing, which is in its states in the first line. Purchases over fifteen hundred and three thousand for police and fire are to be submitted to the Town Administrator's office for final approval.
Is there a second?
A second?
Any further discussion?
Uh one thing, I believe that highway was also in the three thousand dollar one. So I would like to amend my motion, if that's okay, to include three thousand for police, highway, and fire. Fifteen for all of the departments.
So on the amendment, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion on the amendment? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. And on the motion to adopt this as an amendment.
So.
Second. All those in favor, any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Continuing with the next item, Board of Health, Staffing and Resources. So as in the past, as the board knows, we've been, it's been a request for additional hours and additional uh actually salaries to uh regarding the uh the Board of Health. I'm a little uncomfortable talking about this without them being present, so I, I believe this is on the agenda, is it on the agenda for Wednesday's meeting?
So it's not on the agenda for Wednesday's meeting, but what I actually recommend at this point is we, due in the next few weeks, let us schedule a joint meeting.
Yes.
With the Board of Health, so we can all ha- uh have a conversation about where we're going uh and how we go forward on these issues.
I'm I'm okay with that, cause we want to. Okay, Mister Chairman, I motion that we uh authorize the Town Administrator to plan a future joint meeting with the Board of Health to discuss uh staffing and resources.
Second, any discuss- discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
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 The passes, uh union resources, wage and classification, uh study, uh personal policies, especially to to define parameters for non-union personnel or personal policy cover all aspects of the maybe need for individual non-union employment contracts. I think wage and classification study to begin this board wants to review for instance by. I thought this was just for the union employees and not for non-union.
Yes, so yeah, there were two separate issues here, yeah. So on the wage study, we do thankfully the town meeting did approve the funding for that. Um uh there are very good comments out there um who uh who do this work. Uh actually, our executive assistant and I have already spoke to one, uh we were very impressed. Um and um my first question was, did the board want to talk uh speak with any potential friends before we move forward? Uh like was could we move forward?
Um I guess I'll just give my opinion. My opinion is um I would feel comfortable, just as we allow the executive assistant, Town Administrator, and key stakeholders to interview uh job applicants.
Okay.
I almost considered this as kind of the same thing, they're they're not applying, but you know what I mean.
Yeah, I agree, yeah.
We're hiring them to do the wage study. So I would feel com- comfortable in the interest of time, so we can just get this done.
No, but yeah, this.
Would be to allow the Town Administrator, ex- executive assistant, and who they think is relevant. You know, if there's anyone else um to interview them. But I would ask that the recommendation obviously come back to the Board of Selectmen, and that if any board member has any questions or disagrees with, I don't know, thinks another firm would be better, that they should be allowed to interview the applicants, we should be allowed. But if nobody, nobody is opposed to it, no one has an issue with whoever you recommend, then I think we'll just, we would appoint that theoretically.
I think it has to come back to us, and we feel, I don't necessarily feel after interview, uh definitely. We'll just say, you know, it's.
In principle, I I agree, but the one thing that I like about coming before us for the final interview before we vote, is the transparency and the information that the public is able to gain. You know, they hear the term uh wage and classification study, but through the interview process on TV, on Zoom, the public is aware of actually what's going on and what they're going to be doing. So it's an information.
I'll support that. I will support um you doing the interviews, Mister Salas. Bring the finalists back.
Okay.
Right.
And just ask someone from that firm to present, in case the board has questions about that.
Well, we doubt it would have.
I love to, I love that.
It's just like we just did at the Town Council.
Yes, exactly.
What happened.
I love that, they they explain the process, how it's gonna go, how they envision it to go forward, and explain that.
What they what how, what they're being asked to do.
Yeah, perfect.
And then the public will know.
That's perfect.
And the public did, just so everyone, you know, the public did support the wage, but who knows if they, who knows what everyone knew what that was when we voted on it at the town meeting, so I think this is totally fine. I think this is a good way to go forward.
Uh and then really in that, I'm actually the first item allowed to, oh it's allowed to brought a uh item, but I just wanted to raise it just uh you know, as a placeholder for future uh actuarial uh actuarial discussion. One of the things we uh I guess, I think we all understand, we don't have, we don't have a personnel policy. Uh it's especially for non-union employees. And if we, and if we arguably had a a personnel policy, especially for non-union employees, but also one uh that could also cover for union employees, where the CBA is uh like actually asylumed or actually doesn't cover, uh arguably, that could prevent the need from entering into individual non-union employment agreements with those employees. While on the flip side, we could have both, we could have a personnel policy, but we could also, but we could also have non-union employment contracts with applicable department heads. Uh and if, uh and if we recall during the think com committee process here, there was a, there was a conversation um so about one employee that, like I said, it's, so I recommended that uh we have a broader conversation as we go forward. So like how, so how, how we deal with an employee in one department who's a non-union employee, it could potentially be the framework of how we could go forward with others. Um and depending on how we do that or don't do that, uh I think underlying uh uh all that aspect is the need for uh actually a town-wide personnel policy that uh actually happened and to be created regardless. Um and I just wanted to raise that we can have more conversations about it. But it's an issue that um I know our prior assistant Town Accountant, uh you know, uh had a lot of, had a lot of strong feelings about why one would be needed to. So like at least try to level set, oh like as much as we can, our personnel policies as a town.
So I spoke at once to Assistant um Town Accountant McCarron about this, and I think you need to choose one of the other clearly, obviously. You either need to have everyone under a contract that is non-union, or you need to have the policy. My thought is, if you do the policy, and it would be, to be clear, a non-union personnel benefits policy, and it's needed because, I'll give you an example. When Town Administrator Aaronstein left, we had just hired Mrs. Carradona, the conservation agent. And she ended up having to go back and forth a lot of times with the accounting office because it wasn't clear what a non-union personnel uh is entitled to, like in terms of things like vacation and sick time, and all this other stuff that we didn't discuss when we originally made that vote to appoint her. And that's what prompted the discussion I had with uh Mrs. McCarron. I think the policy is better for a couple of reasons. I think it's better because it puts everyone on the living playing field, okay? Meaning everyone that's non-union would get the same things theoretically, right? Same vacation, sick time, health insurance, all that stuff, okay? So you're reducing the amount of, I don't want to say complaints, but issues that could creep up from someone having more or less than someone else. The other issue is, the logistical time would take the Town Administrator, who would be doing the contract negotiation, they would have to negotiate with a bunch of people. So in addition to the union negotiations that we do every year, cause there's always one or two unions that are up in their contracts, now he's having to track down he or she, is trying, having to track down um employees to negotiate their individual contracts. And I think now that's a lot of time that's being spent doing that. And the third reason why I support the policy is because if you have the policy and not individual contracts, and everyone gets the same thing, it's so much easier for the accounting office. There's less errors, there's less paperwork, there's less time with the Assistant Town Accountant and the Town Accountant that's spent going through individual contracts. Part of the reason why sometimes issues arise and grievances um get made is because of just simple errors that happen from people having different contracts. And even within those clinical uh those union contracts, they're, individuals can be treated a little bit differently just based on things like longevity, how long they've been there. And it's really hard for the office to track those things and to pay people according to what they're entitled to per their contract. And so I'm gonna support the non-union personnel policy that outlines benefits, expectations of the non-union employees. And it will be such a a good thing for the accounting office in terms of paying people the correct amount, uh insurance, all those things would be so much more streamlined, so I'm happy to help with that policy too, if you want.
So.
I totally agree with that, but having lived through these discussions in another town, one thing that I would caution all of us is to have a discussion with union leadership. Because a lot of those terms for the non-union employees will be handled in negotiations by union employees. So one of the arguments that a union could make is that the non-union members are benefiting from our negotiations. And with that, and how it was resolved in the other community was the implementation of a user's fee by the non-union employees. That can be a very, you know, I I like what you're saying, I'd like to see it happen. But I think a discussion with union leadership might make things nice and peaceful.
Just to kick you back off that, and I totally agree, and I, that was something I didn't even quite frankly think about. I really appreciate you bringing that up. When I gave my remarks about a policy, I want to be clear, I wasn't, I'm not even agreeing with you on the fact that it should include things that are silent in the union contract. It should just be for the non-union personnel and not even mention any, eh the CBA, I'm not saying that's what you were gonna do.
No, I didn't, yeah.
I want those two things to be as separate as possible to avoid the issue that you're raising, which is a real issue, it can be a real issue.
No, and keeping that in mind, would you negotiate with all the non-union people separately or?
We don't, we just write the policy, we don't, okay.
We would write the policy, yeah, it's, so we have our first, second, and third readings. So we get it, this is just, I think I gave this, uh like three fifty world conversation the very infancy of a broader conversation about this issue. This takes, in another community, this is taking uh at least two years of work, so.
It's a lot of, it's gonna be a lot, but I think I'm glad that you raised the issue, and the reason I am is because we're benefiting right now from still having Mrs. McCarron, and she will always answer our calls, like if if we reach out to her, cause I know she has a lot of good ideas based on different issues that have risen up through the years that she was um our Assistant Town Accountant. And I'm sure she'll be happy to um help us in any way, but but she's still here right now assisting, you know, with a very advisory capacity. Um but we would benefit greatly from her experience and the different things um that she's seen in the office, I think she's been there.
And we're gonna have to look at those contracts that are forwarded, sis, who's got the non-union benefits.
That's probably.
Cause we can't take benefits away currently, although.
I would be totally kicking you in the back.
So yeah, like, I mean, nine people, you shoot that hand, and now, now they have one way or another uh on this answer. But then they have to be the project, those employees who do currently have contracts, oh yeah, obviously, those contracts go to a given point in time, but what do we do with them? Do we let them, if we have an underlying non-union policy, do we let them lapse? Or who would, or is there agreement, or could there be a conversation? The, there's a specific reason why those employees might have a contract, and do we let them continue?
So the, I'm gonna be clear, just to point out the obvious. The only two people that are under contract right now are yourself and the Executive Assistant, I believe. So it's the Town Administrator, he has the Town Accountant left to another job. So it's really just, so we would have a conversation, I think, amongst ourselves. And again, I support Chairman Pichikor hundred percent, we would never take anything away. But I think it might just be something where we put into the policy. but I think it might just be something where we put into the policy that anyone who's non-union currently under contract
Yeah.
is that when their contract is over, they refer back to the policy, something like that. But then we need to write it in a way that we we don't wanna take away vacations, we, you know, from anyone or anything.
So, and I wanna be very clear because this is
So we we don't wanna undercut anyone, we are getting more, the other things are actually just a bunch.
And I also wanna be very clear now, I think this will be on this uh issue, but we're also, as we know, we're in the process of negotiating one contract that we've been.
Mm-hmm.
So I don't wanna give any
Mm-hmm.
I don't wanna scare away
Mm-hmm.
oh, I think in any way we're coming to uh where we might be going with this issue at this point because
Understood, I get exactly what you're saying, thank you.
Thank you.
So the next agenda item is the American Rescue Plan, state federal grants institutions, and you provided us with some uh paperwork on that, and you also gave us a short version of it.
Uh yeah, the first version was very long, uh and uh but uh uh I'd just like to uh give you a very quick summary. So uh like from the state and federal government, uh that we know we're getting eight hundred thirty-three thousand dollars over two years into our Title VIII. Uh a pleasure collector has been out this week, but um I do believe at this point we will, we should have already received the first upfront of that to the two hundred four hundred fifty thousand dollars.
Wow.
Um the, oh yeah, that's being held in a segregated account.
I'm sorry, I don't wanna take away your thunder, but is there some sort of rule for what that can be used for?
Yes.
Okay, we're gonna get into that.
Yes, so then uh then the town is eligible for another one point five million dollars um that is actually coming by way to uh the county of Bristol. And this Thursday night, uh the Bristol County Commissioner is having a meeting with all I apologize if I ever say Norfolk because of my entire life, but the Bristol County Commissioners um are having a meeting with all cities and towns to discuss, I think, a process that they're envisioning for the administration of that type of funding. Because on the funding that their administration, that their administration they're being audited on that administration, so they need to have processes and um procedures in line. So uh so more to come in that as well.
Just a clarifying question, is the one point five, and I'm sorry if you said this, is the one point five million just for Dyson or is that Bristol County and then they figure out the allocation amongst the advisory board?
So that's a really good question, right now
Broken clock is right choice of this, so.
So right now, Dyson share of roughly a hundred million dollars that Bristol County is getting, one point five million that is Dyson's share.
Okay.
How that is administered, or whether the whole thing will be administered to Dyson
Yep.
is is the one point five million dollar question.
Okay.
Um so but there are eligible uses
Mm-hmm.
um in terms of in terms of public health and safety uses.
Mm-hmm.
Um in terms of water infrastructure, sewer infrastructure uses as well, and as well as um broadband uses. There are also uh revenue uh revenue replenishment uses as well, which uh you know, I personally believe, I mean, we should stay away from because those are oh, those could actually further create structural deficits. Oh, you know, like in actually helping restore revenues that uh arguably we have a revenue uh from FY twenty to FY twenty-two, uh we have a revenue deficit in our building permits line because we had a one-time uh we had a one-time permits for the Yayden project. I mean, so if we use that funding, oh, we do that, and we know those revenues aren't coming back. So all we're doing is kicking a can down the road. But um uh we do have water priorities uh through the water district and as um as selectman Hall mentioned earlier, potentially uh through the city of Tottenham, uh like where uh like uh uh where our AFRA funding could potentially be used.
Mm-hmm.
Uh we do uh have sewer needs as well that are much larger. It's so yeah, uh yeah, we have, we have, we also have sewer expansion needs, which are more broader, larger and magnitude. Um I mentioned earlier the public health and safety priorities with the CBAs um in the repeat is on the twin hill. Just as an example, uh and also as we go forward with these and other capital projects um as well, like now included in the fact that what we sent to represent the Fadera on the Pleasant Street Bridge.
Mm-hmm.
Um and also, I mean, also the Milk Street priority with the water districts as well, that uh did a lot of engineering costs on plans that as we go forward, um in order to qualify for the uh any AFRA funding or uh or any other state and federal funding that is actually coming through AFRA, uh and I talked to the highway superintendent about this the other day, uh that we need to be in good positions uh if and when we ever uh short of the eight hundred thirty-two thousand and short of the one point five million dollars, we also know and believe that there's gonna be other AFRA funding coming through the state as well. So like one of the things we discussed and I discussed with Tom is having these projects, like the Pleasant Street Bridge, uh like uh you know, uh like the other things we're talking about, uh uh actually being as shovel-ready as possible. So like when we have a chance to apply uh for a water infrastructure grant or anything else, we already have a uh we've already done our due diligence and have the engineering things done. Uh so so we're able to apply. For this year, I think, uh really like making sure we're investing through uh like our professional and technical budgets, uh in both both potentially the board's blocking budget uh uh in the highway budget as well, like it, so like it actually might require a ongoing investment from those funding sources to make sure that so we're doing the engineering that is that are gonna make us eligible to be applying for these state and federal grants as they come up.
So I guess my question is, why are we not including, like, I I know who what the highway barn is, I don't think, wh-what is that? I know, what is that? I've never heard of this before.
The highway, uh the highway, the new highway barn at um
Tremont Street, Tremont Street.
There's a new barn?
It's, no, no, the potential for.
Okay, okay.
That was my guys' example, the potential, like if we get your
But why are you calling it a barn? It's a garage.
Sorry, that was just
Oh, okay. I have the barn because
I did this at the time. So I did have a certain fatigue, yes.
I also, I had no clue.
I was thinking of getting a water pump, whoa.
But my question is, the, I feel like there needs to be some committee that's making decisions on this. So who, like, okay, I totally agree on the Pleasant Street Bridge, that's, let's take that, that needs to be done. So let's put put that aside.
Yep.
Who's deciding that the highway garage shows before the fire station? Like there, like, these are conversations that need to happen. I don't know why we're talking about engineering thing for shovel-ready projects, but we have the highway garage, there are no mention of the fire station, so like who's the
I just bring it up as an example, so but we're not gonna know potentially
But we're gonna spend money on engineering to make them shovel-ready, so there has to be some kind of a conversation.
I don't disagree. Right, that would come back
Yes, I don't disagree, as these things actually come up or don't come up,
Mm-hmm.
then these are the things we'll bring back to the board. But I'm just bringing these up for me, I don't have any plans or I'm not suggesting right now we have any plans to do engineering for a highway dive. It's just the example that these things are the things that are made or they may not come up. And we just have to be ready to strike when the iron's hot, if the iron ever becomes hot.
You have any questions?
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah, no, no, come on. We have a committee, which I'm delighted to see has been formed. The Capitol, our little committee, please, at
It's municipal buildings committee too.
As well.
So I have a poll, and I think this is already the case, that they are working on a priority list to give us recommendations.
Mm-hmm.
And you're a representative of both.
Yeah, I can tell you, we uh we just met, gentlemen, we're gonna meet again in August, I think August is our next year. Try to put it in somewhere, yeah.
Because one of the things that I know without mentioning specific buildings, but because of the political nature, the way how town meeting works, a group could come in and advocate for their project and bump another project.
Mm-hmm.
And I think
Yeah.
we all know what I'm talking about.
Mm-hmm.
Um and that is unfortunate.
Mm-hmm.
You know, the beauty of Capitol Hall, they committee is they have a plan and a timeline and they have priority list, and everybody in the community knows what's coming, when it's coming. There are no surprises, and it reduces the amount of politics at play. A town meeting that brings in one project, it gets approved, and pushes the other one back in the back.
Mm-hmm.
Because it's if you schedule two projects at the same time
Yep.
you're gonna have a problem because you're not gonna have enough money and some other one's gonna get bumped.
Yep.
And I I'd like to see that end.
I agree.
So this whole idea of Capitol Hall, they and their recommendation, I was really looking forward to hearing.
And I think they're gonna be a really good force because the residents approve that by law.
Yes.
So this was a committee whose composition is literally determined by the residents of Dyson. Um so I think that lends them more credibility when they come and they say, you know, we need
This, this is a schedule.
that's what I see, and here's the schedule for the next year.
Yes.
So I totally agree, I think it's a good thing. Uh okay, that makes sense, Mike, I'm I'm totally on board.
So how are we able to use any of these, uh, finally says hiring state and local government staff up to the numbers of employees to pre-candidature, so we can, second page. And not on that, but on this version here.
Okay.
So we laid off some people at prime time, we were talking about maybe starting prime time again, we'll use any spence to hire those people back, I don't, like a dishwasher, I know we had
So so arguably we couldn't, but the prime time ideally in its, arguably oh under the structure that prime time is, the revenues that would come from the prime time clients would arguably pay is for the dishwashers in uh in the fees for prime that prime, that prime time floods. And if it, and if it doesn't, arguably, all we could be doing is further creating a structural so if we use those revenues, hypothetically, all we might be doing, if we took those revenues to hire dishwashers, just as an example, oh, if the prime time uh fee wasn't able to cover that, arguably, all we would be doing is not actually to get into the root of the issue that prime time is not a self-sufficient organization, and we could be kicking a can down the road, arguably as well.
So when when we discussed that, uh over the prime time, can we have the figures as in the past?
Yes.
Where the expenses, you know, enough funds have come in to pay for the for the staff.
Yeah.
I understand that when we first opened it up again, some of the past uh patients, clients may have passed, but over a year, we're working with those seniors. Uh so the startup may be a little slow as well, if we can look at the revenues in the past and if they paid for the salaries
Mm-hmm.
or the wages for those employees over there, it'd be interesting seeing that.
No, that makes sense.
That was a big, and you remember, so I've mentioned Pichiko, that these are questions that we've asked over the last couple of years, so we do should keep our eye on that. Um I am aware, um we speaking to the Somerset Executive Director of Council on Aging, um I don't believe they're fully, they're like opening their prime time again. So I think that just, I'm just making a general, I'm not, please know I'm not giving my opinion on should it be open, should it not, should we continue, should we not. But I think that according to them, there is an opportunity to actually have more clients. But the other thing we need to ask ourselves is, are we in a position to capitalize on this? So I think we can have that conversation with the Council on Aging, with um Executive Director Alice Souza, um and I'm happy to have those conversations. But I think we should also be objective. I think, you know, we all wanna support prime time, we all wanna support the Council on Aging, like, we should, right? But I just want us to take an objective look at the numbers, at the trajectory, at the climate, and then make a determination on, is this a good idea or is this not? And now, I'm not gonna be so much thinking about like what the politics are out there. I just, if it's, if something is not working, it's something, it is our job to say that. We we're not helping anyone if we don't. So I look forward to seeing the numbers and um having that conversation with um Mrs. Souza. I'm sure Mr. Ferry will be there, um Mrs. Powell, Mrs. New as well.
Yeah, that's a conversation for the future, I was just bringing it up because
Yeah.
um some of the tip covers on the salaries of those people that we live on.
And how many individuals were there?
I know, I wanna say it was three, but I'm not, I'm not
With two in three.
Two-thirds of those people that go to prime time are non-residents of the town of Dyson. Prime time has been running in a deficit since the beginning. Let's say it costs thirty-five dollars a day to have a client there, but we're only charging thirty dollars a day. So the tax phase of the town of Dyson actually subsidizing non-residents.
Think about that.
Mm-hmm.
We're paying for people that don't even live there.
That's why I've asked, I received the numbers as well as Dr. C has asked, I received the numbers, whether it's costing the town money or not, and I understand when we first started, we're gonna have less numbers than we had before. I don't know how many clients we had before, I don't know why nine or eleven stick in my mind, and I'm not sure if that covers all the expenses, but that's something that we need to, obviously, we need to look at. But that's not the agenda for today, we're gonna be addressing that in the book we've needed.
Which is his point, we will take an objective look, and that will be taken into consideration.
We should be taking care of our own, not people that live out of town.
Well, it's just that if we didn't have enough people here, and that's why I think they they expand. But I don't know all the mechanics of how
But we could charge non-residents more, whatever the fee may be, to cover their costs.
Yeah, I have no idea what the fee is, so I don't know whether this is uh something that sustains itself or we haven't broken the price of fees or whatever. It is a program, I just wanted to make sure that's gonna work for the town, so. Anything else on the American Rescue Plan?
No, I think that town administrator Ron has done, I know that these are like complicated programs, so I just, you know, anything from the federal government is not usually like pointing to the, it's can be complicated. So I know things change daily following on this, so I just thank you for keeping track of it and making it a priority. And I think regardless of what we end up assigning, we as a community, that's the we I'm using, with to do with this money, it is gonna be a good thing for the town, and it is gonna be a couple million dollars that we would have had to raise and appropriate or use from free cash and stuff to do these things. So thank you for keeping track of it, and it is a
Why not do those things? Because we don't have
Correct, correct.
So is someone gonna be at the Bristol County meeting uh next Thursday? Because you have a representative?
So I can help with that.
Yes, and I'll be there as well.
Are they teaching you in the group?
Yes.
Okay.
So you'll be able to give us a report ahead?
Absolutely.
Follow that, good.
Thank you, sir.
Good. Uh Lance, can you say priorities more streamlined, communication, professionalization, I'm not sure.
Yes. So yes, in this, I mean, I know like, well, hoping to keep everything moving along, but one of my goals, like internally for myself is, um I I mean, I've talked to the zoning commissioner about this as well, uh but in the same vein that uh you know, that I have created like our internal financial team meetings, um I want to also like create um an internal uh uh like essentially so so essentially building permitting, uh regular team meeting as well uh through the zoning commissioner, um through conservation agent, health agent, um uh you know, like in considering, um also because it's also important the manager of the planning and zoning departments as well. Uh so just so like we can as a team, uh understand and anticipate the different things that I'm having coming up. Um I know, uh like, uh you know, the conservation and commission, just um as an example, uh you know, there's been a lot happening there, like where I just think it could be helpful for more uh it could be understood and anticipated between the boards and commission or between the departments in any applicable boards that uh we can help in laying on as well, so.
May I make a suggestion?
Yes.
Um I love this idea, I think this is really a long time coming. Um now that we have completed that first round of the community compact, so I'm piggybacking, I agree with everything you said. Now that we have completed the community compact cabinet, uh three best practices, um we are eligible for more land use and conservation grants. So Mike, if possible, and it doesn't The committees like the open space committee don't need to be part of the building and permits meetings. But what I would ask is if a meeting could eventually be coordinated for. Like if, for example, someone from the open space committee, Mrs. Bidlack was really peddled. She's not here. But we're thinking about doing open space residential design by law. So this would be the perfect time to bring in stakeholders from planning, zoning, land use, open space, conservation. Let's have those conversations because. A committee can't move in a vacuum because there are other moving parts and everyone gets a say. Um, so we need to bring people on board and I think if we could have those conversations. Get those stakeholders together, figure out what land use grants and conservation grants we're eligible for.
And be coordinated.
And be coordinated and that way it's not falling on the town administrator to write all the grants. If each stakeholder plays their role, just like when we did the green community grant. I will not say the town administrator did not play a role. She played a huge role. However, a lot of the work has already been set forth because we formed a committee to specifically work on it. And so everybody played a part and not one person ended up having to do all the work and it worked really well.
So yes, everyone, that is very easy to my ears because one of the things to a give exact point. Now that we have an open space recreational plan. We are eligible for parking land grants. In order to capitalize on them, there really needs to be some synergy between, uh, like all stakeholders about how we're gonna go after. How we're gonna go after those things and what we're gonna go after and enforce.
Exactly. No, I really like this idea and I think it's really a good idea. Is Jim on board?
Yes. No, we need, yes, I.
Okay, it's probably him, honestly.
Okay. Special time meeting articles, running, starting and planning. What has been mentioned before was the dog kennel by law. I know that there was gonna be a change.
Is that the border?
So.
That's what I'm asking for.
The, um, the original bylaw revision came from the animal control officer itself. For kennels, but I saw that and I met with the animal control officer last week. Uh, we do want to get, um, actually the border health involvement, have a more robust conversation, uh, like about. Uh, like, oh, not only addressing that one issue within the, within the kennel by law, but assessing. Oh, if there's any other things we should be looking at, oh, in the kind, in the kennel by law in general. So just to bring, uh, like, so if we don't approach town meeting trying to address a peace meal issue. Uh, like maybe, oh, you know, the by law in more full context.
We talked about the trails committee feasibility study. We postponed from the animal town meeting to the special time meeting, so that probably will be on the. Special time meeting, I believe we're gonna have the Brook Street solar pilot completed by then, so we're gonna have a reservation to.
Has Nathan given us an update on that?
Um, I know she's been giving me updates.
Yes.
Okay.
That is moving forward.
Can you say it on the secrets?
Trying to, but thanks for bringing it up, though. That is going on.
Okay, good.
Uh, speed, speed zone, uh, by law.
And this is specific to, is it, is it a general thing for Saltman Pacheco or is it specific to Pleasant Street?
I don't believe it's specific to Pleasant Street. That was one of the.
Uh, like it started. Oh, it was intended to be specific to, um, Pleasant Street, uh, in areas around. I think hot street and all, uh, you know, that area. Uh, but I know, uh, the highway superintendent tonight will be working on it. And we have models from other communities in terms of.
Okay.
Um, templates. I was also on permit last week and and I saw that they actually have speed zone. Speed safety zone by law as well because they have signs up all over the place.
Yep.
Uh, so, um, I just haven't had time to do it, but I'm gonna go and see exactly how they did it because. Um, so that is.
Works too. So the way it works, you know, because I asked Mr. Ferry. Each. This is a model, right? So I'm not, I'm not saying there won't be another one, but. It, since it has to be specific to the street, then each time. A safety zone is created theoretically, it has to go to a town meeting for that specific area. Okay, alright.
Uh, next, uh, thing that's gonna be on the special time meeting is the APPA funding. You addressed that earlier.
So potentially, uh, I mean, a lot of that really depends on coming up with a plan and having the capital. The capital outlet committee involved in that plan, uh, yeah. Any things we might be trying to fund with APPA, uh, like October, especially time meeting in October could actually be. Could be premature as well. But I'm just trying to anticipate, uh, any type of issues at this point as well.
With that money.
Mm-hmm.
The way the agreement is set up between the Dayton Water District and the town.
Mm-hmm.
How would the process take place? Because the money is coming into the town side to go to the Dayton Water District side. How would that be handled?
If hypothetically that were to happen. That is the two point four million dollar question, um, but, um.
Would that take a tumble?
That's, that's what I'm anticipating at this point, just to put it in place for now. Uh, if those, if those decisions may, uh, be so before then. But I think a lot of the details are in the actual federal guidelines that are coming down from the fence. And, uh, I just have to dive further into the details to see how we actually would administer it and. How we essentially, yes, to kind of administrate that funding, uh, like if it actually takes a town meeting vote. Uh, like if we should have a town meeting vote just to have, have all our residents actually weighing in and supporting that. But I, I do need to get to the, to the answer of that question because that question is extremely important.
I think it would take about years. You're transferring money from one entity to a completely different. So that could be like purchasing something.
However, on the flip side, with the Bristol County funding, there could be a chance that the Dayton Water District could apply directly to Bristol County. So those are the details which I expect will be forthcoming.
Thank you.
Uh, other issues, I had, I had spoken to town council Thursday about a, uh, black policy. And he's, he's gonna be working on a black policy that will be brought back to the board here inside, whether that's, we're agreeing with it. But that, I've asked him to, uh, consider putting on the town warrant. So that the residents of town can decide whether or not they support the flag policy. Uh, and he thought that that was a good idea, so that's probably what's gonna happen if the board agrees that. Let's see what he's coming up with. He's gonna be checking into and he won't do this right away. He's got projects, so thanks for. He's gonna see what other towns are doing, he's gonna state that's regarding this and then he'll look at it and we'll decide what we want to put on the warrant. And then, um, special time meeting in October, residents will get to speak on it. Yes, and, uh, for that.
Public's information. I was wondering, will we be holding? Three discussions on this to go on the warrant? Will it be one meeting? Um, I really wanna make sure that, you know, um, groups like even. Rights committee, um, are able to participate in that discussion. And I think having one meeting to do it is even more.
That's my, uh, I, man, I'm glad I didn't wanna cut you off. Um, I think what we should do, this is just my personal opinion. I do think we should bring it to town meeting. I totally agree on that. I think what we should do is write a policy. We always treat our policies the same. We always do three meetings and so it would occur. Basically, if you started at the first meeting in a month, you would end at the midway through the next month. So you have a whole month and a half to get feedback from us, from residents, from anybody. Then what we would need to do is, because obviously you can't present a policy at a town meeting. We would need to refer to the policy in a by law.
It's gonna be a.
So the selectmen would have to still vote, get public input. I'm sorry, that's process is not correct. Get public input, get input from our professionals. Have a policy that we read three times, vote, or the selectmen votes on the policy. However, what we can say at that time is this will not go into effect until residents approve this or not. At the special town meeting and then we would write a by law that refers to the policy in its entirety. And that's what residents would vote on at the town meeting. And I think that that's fine. That's just my personal opinion, that that process that we've discussed, I'm okay with. Uh, my only thing is, I just, I think we should have a hearing before that special time meeting, the selectmen. Just for the, that by law, just as I did for the stretch vote before we brought it to residents for green communities. And you're gonna have a lot of tough questions, but it told you what you needed, the homework you needed to do. In order to be able to answer those questions at the actual town meeting where the residents will consider it. And give, just let people, explain it to people. Let people ask their questions. Um, don't, I think it's a bad idea either way the policy is written. I'm not giving my opinion to just show up at a town meeting. Because that's when everyone's gonna ask the questions if they haven't had a chance to ask them before. And I really think it's best to do your best. Everyone will vote the way they wanna vote and that's the way democracy works. But at least you're giving people the information and the facts around the document and how it came to be. And I think that that's a good thing.
So I don't mind having a public hearing before the actual special time meeting, but I'm not sure why we would have to read it three times and vote on it. Uh, when it's not gonna be policy if the residents rejected, so I don't mind having a hearing and having a hearing to vote just in that. But it's gonna be a by law change. I mean, it's gonna be a by law. And that has to, you have to have a public hearing, I believe anyway, on the change of the bylaws. And then we bring it to the special time meeting and the same questions may be asked with it, uh, more, uh, additional questions and then we'll discuss them. But I'm not sure we have to bring it up three times. I'm just trying to think of.
Can you just outline for me then how you would wanna do it? I'm not.
I would want us to, uh, see what the, uh. Town council has come up with. We have a conversation, public, I have an important, that conversation to be at one of our selectmen's meeting. We decided that's what we wanna have on the warrant. And then we agree that's gonna go on the warrant and we have a public hearing so people get information as to how the by law is gonna work and how the policy gonna work. And then, uh, we'll vote on the special time meeting, but I wouldn't want to put the my town administrator to make sure that. Explaining that this process is the correct way to deal with something like this, so.
Yes, I agree. Yes, I agree with that because, I mean. If a poli, if there's a policy in a by law going to town meeting, I think just a by law going to town meeting.
No, it wasn't a policy in a by law. We would have the policy. The by law just refers to it. I don't think you can have on the warrant a ten-page document. I'm just, I'm giving.
Ten pages?
No, or like a three-page document. I don't think that that really happens. It's, it would be like, like the sewer bylaws that we have. You look at the general bylaws, it just refers to them. They're not actually there.
Under wire.
It's separate documents.
I think kennel, for example, kennel by law is all written out. I remember it's like.
I believe it'll be under wire. Just like the rewrite of the conservation commission by law for the fees. Uh, like two pages on the warrant that would just.
Okay.
At the annual.
Okay, so if we do it that way, then we wouldn't theoretically need to do three readings. It's a by law, not a policy.
Yes.
Okay. I'm not giving my opinion. I'd like to hear.
Yeah, so. How many meetings would be held prior to the publication? Of the approval, the publication of that by law?
So I, I don't think I can answer that because we're gonna be giving a policy recommendation, a by law recommendation from our town council. We're gonna discuss it. We may not decide on it that day or that meeting and then we may continue it. The public will have, be able to have their inputs as far as what that, uh, by law is gonna be. But then, once we agree that this is gonna go on the warrant, we would then have a meeting of the public to explain what's on the other one. Doesn't mean we're all agreeing with the policy or by law, or it just means that we've asked that it be put on the warrant.
So at that second, or that open meeting. The by law would have been already written, but could it be amended at that point?
I don't think it can be amended. It actually depends on the timing of it. I don't know if we actually have that public hearing.
Couldn't be amended on the floor.
Excuse me, sorry. It can be done on the floor, yes.
I just, the, the reason I.
You'd normally be surprised that there's another article for, for that.
Yeah, we're discussing this right now, actually.
I just feel like it's better to give people the chance to change the document and that's why I have proposed.
It depends on the timing of it. If the warrants are closed and we have a public, they're suggested do. Uh, we're having a discussion on that particular warrant. We can't change that. So I, I think we need to see what the town council comes up with. It may be easy for us to agree or disagree with it and take it for that. If we're gonna have a, uh, a public hearing and we learn about changes and I'm not sure how. How that happens.
My idea was simply, as we always do, to craft it. Based on other towns' policies, some which fly flags, some which don't. Do your best to make one policy and then do the readings and then people can give their input and we can change the document. I just, I just think it's problematic, just, I'm just talking about like strategy, right? I'm not talking about anything else. I think it's problematic to not let people be part of the process and then to take it to town meeting and hope that people agree with it. I think it's better to bring people along.
Well, they, they gotta be part of the process because we're gonna discuss our voting meeting at the board of selectmen. And then once we come up with the by law, that we're gonna have a public hearing to discuss with the public as to how we came up with that, what, what entails, what does it mean. Uh, but I'm open to anything. People wanna have it so that it's a moving document or it's not gonna change.
In my, I wanna, I wanna hear from Saltman Hall. In my process, the difference is, in my process. You're having people give input, you're incorporating or not that input and then you're giving it to town council for review. This, in your process, town council is literally creating it and not, like, you probably can't change much of it because it's.
But they, no, they're gonna suggest something, so it's just gonna present to us what other towns have done, what the state has done. And we can agree or disagree with what they're recommending. Saltman Hall, I saw you.
Yes. Mr. Chairman, are you going to make a motion? That motion that the process, black policy include the following. One, a first review of town council. Secondly. An open meeting with the residents of Dayton to discuss the proposal. And then at that meeting, any recommendations they may have for changes to that. And then before we vote to put it on the warrant. Prior, I should say, prior to it being placed on the warrant. That there be a final opportunity for public input before it went to town meeting. So in essence, it would be three meetings.
I agree with your motion and I'm happy to second it. I just asked that you amend it a little for after that last chance for public input. If that document gets changed or proposed changes are made, it needs to be run by town council one more time.
Changes yet.
Correct.
Oh, yes.
Okay, do you accept that amendment?
Yes.
Okay, I would accept your amendment. Your amended motion.
So you said by policy, there's a, it's gonna be a black policy by law.
Probably a by law, yeah.
So, uh, just with that clarification. Any further discussion on this motion? All is okay to say, aye?
Aye.
Aye, propose, extension of the ice, absolutely. Uh, town administrator, we're gonna need kind of a timetable from the, uh, town council last day, like they're working us and contributing to our.
Yeah, and then how, so then, uh. Uh, the, probably the last meeting in July will have, uh, for your review and approval. Uh, probably a timeline for the special time meeting warrant, uh, for the open. When it will close and that process that will take us to the special time meeting. Um, probably in mid October.
Okay.
Yes. Does that make sense? So that all of those, uh, all that can actually sync together when the warrant opens and when it closes and so forth.
So the board does schedule it.
Yes. If that makes sense.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you. And, um, I just want to commend before we move on from this particular issue. I wanna commend, um, my colleagues and as well our town administrators for trying to find. For trying to find the best possible way forward on this, a way where people are heard. And I have another issue, because I wanna remind everybody that here, this didn't pop in my brain. Residents had asked me to do it, and that's why I was brought forward. So there are groups of people who wanna see it, and there are groups of people who don't wanna see it. And we talked about a lot of division, and I'll tell you why there's division. There's division because you have one group who wants to see it fly permanently and one group that doesn't wanna see it fly at all. So there's no compromise here. The reason I asked for it to fly during Pride Month is because I thought that that was a compromise. That would make no one happy, because that's how the politics is. Politics is the art of making agreements, where everybody gives a little bit and everybody leaves the table unhappy. So that's how that came about, and I just wanted to take that for the record. But thank you guys for, in all seriousness, for coming to some kind of a way forward.
Thank you very much.
Yeah.
A library building study, uh, committee, it's also gonna be on the warrant, I guess.
So, yeah, like, I have a question mark after that, that.
That's not a town meeting thing.
Exactly, yeah, that was just a hypothetical, based on our conversation earlier today, that. So I'll just kind of skip on, if you will.
I, I just started on the special time meeting, not a question.
Oh, yeah, no, it was on these one, yeah, it was like this.
I was just saying, I'm not giving my opinion on if we should form one or not. I'm simply saying it's not a town meeting vote, it's just the board's vote.
Yes, yeah. Yeah, okay, right.
People are already lining up to duck there, right?
Get out there!
The special goals of bylaws for us, like, I know I spoke of my goal, but I'm not sure if you're adding any of those goals to this.
My only goal, and I'll be very clear for today, was just simply for us to have an understanding as selectmen of what our responsibilities are. I think we know, so like, you know, when we're two projects, so Selectman Hall has three, I have three, it's very clear what our jobs are. Um, and the reason why I wanted to do this is so that this is not, it's not all stuff that falls on the town administrator. So what I noticed previously, before we are blessed with our second town administrator, is that. I feel like I personally got too comfortable with having Mrs. Arrington here, because she was just a force of nature who. Would just dive in headfirst, but the problem was that sometimes it would take things longer to get done because they were doing so much. And so I just see this as a way of us keeping up with the workload, delegating. We still have our town administrator who is, steers the ship day to day. Um, but the more work that the selectmen are able to do outside of the meetings, I think the better it is for the town. Um, and, and the quicker things get done. Um, so I wanna thank my colleagues for being willing to, um, divvy up the work. Um, and being so willing to do it. Mm-hmm.
Just, I just wanna make a comment. We've only had a town administrator for, was it three and a half years now?
Mm-hmm.
And it was to take away some of the burden and responsibilities of the, uh, selectmen, if you remember.
Mm-hmm.
In the past, we've had, uh, the chairman spend twenty-four seven in the building, uh, doing all the work. Taxpayers agreed that we were hired a town administrator, uh, to do a lot of that work. So I agree that anytime we can assist the, uh, our committee here, we should be able to, uh, to do that, so.
I would love to know if they have, Mr. Chairman, if it's okay, if our administrative team or our town administrator has anything, like suggestions for us? That we could do differently about it?
I don't think that's something agenda.
Why?
No, I.
You can call actually.
Yeah, no, just waiting for, I, I'm not taking a photo, any of us have done anything today. I could stay away from that.
But probably a good idea.
I mean, I give it my six-month evaluation.
Yes, correct.
But. No, I mean, I think, I think this, oh, you know, like, we talked a lot about this meeting for the last, uh, you know, two and a half, three months. And I think, uh, you know, I think the, what has gone into planning for it, uh, like in the priorities and the. Oh, and the level setting, if you will, that we got out of today, um, I think was effective. I mean, maybe we could do this, like, as a, like, as a, in your process. Uh, at least just so we have a regular process to check in that, uh, that's open. Uh, that folks are able to participate and see and learn about, but it gives us a chance, you know, like, outside of the regular rush. I think we have to get done by, um, eleven P M. on Wednesdays, if you will. Uh, the chance really, so, sort of check in to make sure, uh, all of us are on the same page.
Mm.
Um, uh, in term, in terms of my goals, um, uh, not to jump ahead, but. Uh, you know, like, I think those are evolving as well. Like, I did outline a few of them, uh, you know, in terms of, you know, I. Uh, I, uh, we restarted the other meetings with our team. Um, I do want to, um, after the first part of this month, I want to get back to having a town administrator monthly newsletter. I think that is critically important. I mean, frankly, I wanted to do, uh, you know, I was. Originally, when I started, I wanted to have one done before town meeting. That was my, but I just, I mean, it's been a little crazy, but, um, I do want to get back to that being a regular monthly process. Um, I want to move forward with, um, our financial teams, our, our land use team. Uh, really focus on a lot of the capital, the capital planning and the financial management stuff that we mentioned, but. Uh, you know, I do, uh, in my contract, it does, um, actually mention, I'm saying that, so like, goals may not. So they could be outlined formally, or like, they could just be reported, however the board, uh, you know, wants really to do that. Uh, you know, like, I'm open game. I mean, I think you know me by now, probably much more than you ever want to, but, um. Oh, you know, that I'm an open book. I like, you know, I like to extract the feedback as we go as well, and, uh. Uh, and I really do, at least I believe, I think we've really been going, but really everything been going here with our whole team here. And, um, I think we're, uh, if you onto something, I think things are settling down, so like, we can plan and, uh, really have a better.
Just shapeless.
I know, I know, someone's gonna blow up. Uh, but I, yeah, so, so that's that. And then, uh, you know, in terms of. Uh, uh, administrative and executive team as well, I think one of the things that, uh, you know, has happened that I believe it's one of the best things that. Um, has happened was, uh, you know, has been our executive assistant, you know, being, um, uh, uh, actually involved in a lot of the projects. Uh, like in the grants that we have happening, uh, whether they're green communities, uh, whether they're the Brick Street. Uh, the Brick Street COVID process as well, uh, you know, like, if possible, I'd like to see those things actually continuing so we can actually build out. And further just, like, actually strengthen the expertise of our team.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and then, uh, you know, with the additional hours, I mean, I think we parked that length earlier. Uh, like, with our administrative assistant, Ms. Curran, about really, uh, I don't, so like, really like building on a lot of the stuff we've been doing with. On our websites, with our boards and commissions, uh, like, even with our communications as a town as well, so, um.
Thank you. You guys have anything you wish to add?
Um, I agree with everything Mike said. Our goal, change evolve as we go along. Um, everything's just, every day is different. The meetings, I think we all agree, have, uh, the meeting that we have today was awesome. It lets us all know what's going on, what we're doing, what we've done in the past week, what we're gonna do next week, but, yeah, it was awesome.
Yay!
So we all agree on that. But we continue to streamline processes as we see them, as we see the issues come up, so that's been awesome. I'd like to work on some records retention coming year, going through the files, stuff like that. Hopefully we can add up to town for that. Um, that's all I have. I mean, I'm always willing to take on, well, anything that she has been doing in the past. She wants to hand it over to me. This year was the annual county report, the, uh, appointments. She did an amazing job. Um, but you know, I, I'm here to support her so she can, you know, like, it just, it, it, we work well together, you know, so that way she can do more.
So I do have to say, the other day, like, Leanne told me that I have a tendency to go off the track sometimes, which I was a little taken back about, like.
As he goes off the track.
So, yeah, self-awareness is a tendency.
Mr. Ford, have any questions for, on staff here?
No, I just, if there's something that you need from us, like, especially in the end of, like, anything to do with the website, I still remember how it all worked, so. Um, I know when we send that email out, you may get a lot of people who need to have accounts made, so if you need any help with that, I know, I can check that.
Yeah, I'm looking forward to it. And that the training is only one hour, and he said that he could.
It was originally too.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's awesome though, because we had exhausted the free training, so the fact that there was.
You want to get, yeah.
I don't know what you did, who you spoke to, what could work. You sure it was revised?
Um, so I hope everybody looks at that and says, okay, it's just an hour, and it's, you know, as opposed to it being, you know. Four-hour data, which I wouldn't suppose.
Do you have those documents that I created for like how to upload minutes, how to? I have a bunch of, I have, okay, I will send it, you probably have, so I will send that to you, because I do send it when, like. The new town accountant, uh, assistant town accountant, I just missed it, but normally I would send it to the new employees, so we're gonna do the website stuff. And also, we have a user manual, like a general user manual from Revise that I will send you as well. That if you want, you can give to people as they sign up. Alright, thank you. But it looks great. Everything's up to me.
So before we, but during, I just wanted a comment that is, Selectman's Hall that suggested when he first came on board that we have this retreat. It was a great idea.
Mm-hmm, thank you.
And he mentioned that when he was, uh, when he was part of the, like, the board of, uh, school, they had done this also. So I thought it was a great idea, let's sit down.
We just have to remember one.
Yes, uh, not right away, but yes. But when you, when I thought you had jinxed, that's again, I thought things were. And I says, this should be a short meeting at eleven o'clock, maybe a long one. During the meeting, you know, but, uh, I think it's been a successful, uh, meeting. I think it's great to. Have these conversations and discussion. I could be having better ideas the way the rest of the town.
Yeah, I think this is great.
Just to introduce all the public, I don't know how much public we have. Maybe we don't have anybody.
No.
I'm not sure.
Listen, no.
I think we have a private event, only gonna get to, not myself, Dr. Z, and Slavon Hall into the, the water. I've already taken a look at it, so, since I can't swim, it is a little, it's a little bit neck, so I think they don't want me, uh, maybe I'm gonna have to like.
Michael, just leave there.
Stop, stop rolling back up under the podium, just a little.
But I think the public likes to see us go in the water, so I.
Throw it, we want to go. They're giving what they want.
Chico's still in the water, we'll give him five minutes.
No, you don't, you don't need floaty there, you're good.
I think, uh.
I know. Would, would get, he have a pair in the office.
Oh, do?
No.
Anything, uh, anything else that we, we need to discuss at now, uh, being in motion to adjourn?
So move.
Second, all who's in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, second, uh, established. Thank you, everybody.
Because of you.
We don't want that.
So, say your mouse.
Uh, I will.